We've started. Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. My name is Stephanie Phillips, and we're now beginning the zoning commission hearing. I'm going to just do my normal administrative piece that everybody's gotten used to hearing. The Stratford Zoning Commission is now open for public hearing. These petitions were advertised to be heard at this session. For the record, the petitions to be heard this evening were advertised in the Connecticut Post on March 15th and through end March 22nd. These properties were duly posted on March 21st. And I appreciate a number of people here. If you could, just for the courtesy, cell phones, put them on vibrate, silent, and if you do want to speak, please go out in the hallways, kind of give people a chance so they can hear. When we finish with the applications, I know a lot of people kind of leave, so as courteous as you can be, we all appreciate it. We're going to take a couple of things out of order, all right? The first application, as I announced, 29 Thompson Street has asked for a continuance. We had an application that came in last month that we didn't hear because they didn't have certificates of mailing, so we wanted to give them an opportunity to come up first and continue that. So I'm going to ask for a motion to take number four, One Wood End Road, out of order.
Some move, Madam Chair. I'll take the petition of One Wood End Road out of order.
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Pepin. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Mr. Rukuskas?
Yes.
Would you read number, what was number four, One Wood End Road?
Certainly. One Wood End Road, Petition of Mayor Cabrera Seeking An Approval Of Liquor Location At An Existing Restaurant In A CA District.
Good evening, everyone.
Thank you. Do you have your certificate of mailing?
Yes, this time, yeah.
You can give them to Mr. Rukuskas. You can tell us about your application and why you want, why you submitted the application. It's your opportunity to talk to us.
All right. Like last time I say, you know, I would like to, to apply for the liquor permits, you know, it does complement the food we're serving now. We just want to serve it wine and beer at all. It's not going to be a bar or something like that. It's just going to serve with the food. It's because also a lot of clients was asking, you know, and sometimes feel weird to say, you know, you can bring your own wine and your beer and just keep the receipt on the table, so they have to get out from the place and go get it, so doesn't make really good for me.
What kind of liquor do you expect to sell?
Just wine and beer.
Just wine and beer? Okay. At this point, I'm going to let the commissioners ask questions. Anyone have a question? Mr. Fuller?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for your testimony, Ms. Cabrera. So just for the record, this is a wine and beer permit, not hard spirits. I know there's many different categories of liquor permits in the state of Connecticut. Would your hours of operation be changed at all, or is it, you're still going to maintain the same?
Actually, you know, that place, it's very small, so we don't expect to have like a bar or going to change my mind later. It's just going to keep and continue like that.
Okay. You're just being able to sell beer and wine, so I see you like a Class A or Class B permit. I think the permits go all the way up to letter R in the state of Connecticut, so there's whole different sorts. And to my understanding, it was bring your own booze or bring your own drink before, but now you're looking to just establish this permit to sell the beer and wine?
Right. You know, before, a lot of people, after we served the food, you know, a lot of people really liked to have his glass of wine. So always, you know, after the people sitting and asking for food, we serve the food, they was like, may I have a glass of wine? Feels weird to say, you know, we don't really have our liquor permits, but you can bring your own and just keep the receipt on the table, because then we show we don't sell that.
I certainly understand the business logic behind it, too. It's usually, it's very cultural to have beer and wine with meals, not just here, but in Latin America, Europe, throughout the whole world. That's pretty much concludes my questions. I didn't really have anything other than just the basics.
Any other questions? No? We don't have any questions at this point. May I have a motion to table?
I make a motion.
Oh, that's right, the public. I almost forgot, moving along. Thank you, Ms. Cabrera. What I'm going to do now is open it up to the public to allow people an opportunity to voice their opinions for or against, and then we're going to motion to table it once we complete that.
All right.
Okay?
All right. Thank you very much. That's my petition.
If anybody who wished to come to speak in favor, Mr. Knott?
Very not. 1656 Main Street, Stratford. I live very near this place. I have for the last 60 years. Watch that corner. I'm two blocks away. I actually had lunch in there recently. The place is immaculate. The food is all homemade and terrific Ecuadorian, I think. Is it Ecuadorian?
Yeah.
Yeah, Ecuadorian food, which I had never had before, but it was very good. It's perfect for a beer and wine setup. I mean, they're never going to get a bar in there. The place is tiny. They got tables set up for outside, and it's going to do a lot to enhance that corner. So I think it's a good petition.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who would like to speak in favor of the petition? Anybody who would like to speak against the petition? In other words, oppose it? Seeing that there's no other comments, I'd like to ask for a motion to table?
I make a motion to table.
Motion by Ms. Pepin.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Giuliano. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Passes unanimously. Chair votes yes. Closed. Yeah, it's, we can just make it. It's a close. Yeah. Okay. The next application is 396 Nichols Avenue. Ms. Pepin?
396 Nichols Avenue, Petition Of Town Of Stratford Seeking Special Case Approval To Construct A New Parking Lot And Pickup Drop Off Area For A School In An RS-4 District.
And, good evening. Do you have your certificates of mailing? You all set? Ah, perfect.
I have another copy.
No, we're good.
Good evening. For the record, I'm Chris Hulk, a professional engineer with MyLone McBroom, on behalf of the applicant. I've brought some extras of the boards that I'm going to be presenting on. If, you know, kind of zoomed in for you guys if you'd like. A little bit about this project. This project was originally put together as a means to try to alleviate some of the traffic and parking congestions that are currently at Nichols Elementary School. The school is located along Nichols Ave., and the site itself is just to the south of North Ave. Currently onsite, roughly 70 teachers. There's various people that come to the site each day, you know, between parents and visitors and things like that. Currently onsite for parking, there are two parking lots, one on the north side of the school and one on the south side of the school. The south side of the school has 36 spaces in that parking lot, and on the north side, there are 13 parking spaces. So altogether, total of 49 parking spaces for 70 staff and other various visitors that come to the school. Right now, the buses drop kids off on Nichols Ave. at a dedicated bus loop, and the parents that are doing the pickup and drop off are located on the northern parking lot, basically where the intersection of North Ave. and Nichols Ave. are. There's a signalized intersection there. Currently, under the existing conditions for the northern parking lot, there are 13 total spaces and roughly 10 or so cars at maximum can queue up there for pickup and drop off. When we did our review of how many people actually come there to do the pickup and drop off, we found that there's anywhere between 20 to 25 people at a maximum that can be there at one time to be picking kids up and dropping them off. At that point, we found that were outside of the lot queued up on North Ave. and at times also queued up on Nichols Ave. At this point, we found that they were also blocking the intersection for people that wanted to, you know, walk to whatever cars they have to go and get to, because with the limited number of parking spaces that there are onsite, people have to go around and try and find parking on Nichols Ave. or, or Wood Ave. or North, and try and find a spot where they can either go and walk and pick up their kid and come back, or, or if they're actually working that day and a teacher, they will park there for the full day and then have to go to the school. So what we found is that on North Ave., where the existing parking spaces are, the existing entrance and exit is actually very close to the signalized intersection. What they have under current conditions is a right turn only out, because with the proximity that is to the intersection, there's really not enough space for people to take a left turn there with the amount of people that are queuing up, and it's honestly just, just very much of a headache for everyone that's involved in those situations. You know, I'm sure you'll hear afterwards from the parents and teachers just how much of a, how much of an issue it can be. You know, just, just for the record, a couple of housekeeping things is, the site itself is roughly 5.2 acres in size. It's in an RS-4 zone. The topography onsite is generally moderately sloped, with North Ave. basically being the high point on the site, and sloping down to the existing ball fields that are going to have remain and not be touched. Also, we had one of the certified soil scientists from our office go out and review the site, and no wetlands were found onsite. Under proposed conditions, what we were looking to do was increase the number of parking spaces and increase the queuing area onsite. What we found was that by lengthening the queuing area, we would be able to accommodate roughly the amount of people that, that come each day to, to do the pickup and drop off. In your plan set, you'll see that there's two plans that we put in there. Right now, we're seeking approval for the full buildout, which would be the total of an additional 47 parking spaces. This would bring the amount of parking onsite up to 96 parking spaces, which should be able to easily accommodate the 70 staff as well as any visitors, and still have a little ti, a little bit of room left over for parents that would, would be there during pickup/dropoff times. We understand that there are some, some budgetary potential issues for, for the town, so what we'll be doing and looking to do is, when we put the project out to bid, we're going to have a couple of different scenarios, and understanding that if a scaled back version is something that the town wants to move forward with, that we would either work with staff on an administrative type approval or, or come back before you. But right now, we're looking at the full buildout and looking for approval for, for that. So just going through the plan here, what we have is, we'll be adding 47 total parking spaces to the north lot here, and again, bringing the total parking spaces up to 96. What we'll be doing, instead of having an entrance/exit at the existing location, we're going to change that over to be entrance only. We feel that this will help to alleviate a lot of the congestion in that part with people trying to turn in and out, and, you know, the, the entrance over there really isn't wide enough to kind of operate as it should. What we'll do is we'll have an entrance only there with the queuing lane kind of represented here by the blue cars, that will be able to queue up all along the, a new sidewalk that, you know, somebody will basically be out there shepherding kids around and, and kind of accommodating the pickup and drop off operations to be able to make it as efficient as possible. Under the proposed conditions, we'll have space for 20 to 23 queuing vehicles. This should be able to accommodate the amount of people that will be coming there and still have some room for additional people parking. We feel that under this proposed condition, we'll be able to alleviate a lot of the traffic congestion in the surrounding neighborhood and really formalize how the pickup and drop off operations will be handled to kind of clean up what is realistically kind of a mess up. So, under proposed conditions, we'll have an existed or a new pickup, a new entrance and exit that will be located further to the east that will still exit onto North Ave. By moving this over, we'll be able to accommodate both turns in either direction, and in instances where somebody might not want to go through the whole loop, they can still enter into the parking lot, you know, on, on the far side. As part of this, this plan development, we're also going to have a bypass lane, so if anybody needs to get out of the lane when they're queued up, or if they mistakenly turn in and don't want to wait, they'll have a bypass to be able to, to get out. Generally, for stormwater management, the site basically pitches down towards the baseball field. What we'll be doing is maintaining that existing grade to the extent possible and conveying the flow of stormwater through a series of catch basins to an underground detention system. The system was developed for best management practices and was also developed in a way where we'll have no increase in peak rates of runoff for any of the two, 10, 25, 50, or 100-year storm events. As part of the development, we'll have, you know, sediment erosion controls that will be installed during construction activities, making up sediment filter fence and the protection, and also we, we're calling for orange construction fencing to be placed around the, the development. So in instances, if it was under construction during school time, you know, they could, they could keep those operations away from the kids. Right now, this is scheduled to be a summer construction and should be easily, you know, developed and constructed during the, the summer months, so we don't expect that to be a problem, but we are planning for it. As far as the existing vegetation that's onsite, we will be doing our best to maintain the existing vegetation line on the eastern side of the property. This will, you know, help to alleviate any, any light spillover and, and, you know, and any ambient sound and things like that. There is existing vegetation along North Ave., which we'll be removing. A lot of it's kind of overgrown scrub and, and a lot of it's also diseased things that are kind of falling apart already, so we're going to, we're going to take that down and plant back some, some nice street trees, all in conformance with, with the zoning regulations. So just kind of in summary, you know, we're, we're going to be taking a situation that's really not extraordinarily safe for anyone and, you know, kind of a, kind of a nuisance for the town and everyone involved, and adding enough parking to have everyone adequately be able to park there, have enough queuing space for people to, you know, alleviate the, the need to have people on the street or crossing the street when people are trying to pull in and out, get rid of all those types of problems. And again, knowing in the future that if for any reason, budgetary wise, that we weren't able to do the full, full buildout, we would come back and, you know, meet with you guys or work for town staff in administrative type of, type of situation. That, that kind of concludes my spiel. You guys have any questions? Be happy to answer them.
I think we have probably a number of them, so why don't we get started? Mr. Pep, Ms. Pepin?
I have one question. There's a structure that's still going to be on the property. You're going around it, is, am I correct?
So there is an existing house that is located, what's realistically in the middle of the, the site. That, that house is going to remain. The, there is some areas of encroachment that the town, I believe, is taking steps to remedy. There's some existing fencing that's kind of onto the, onto the town's property. Additionally, there's, there's some driveway stuff that's over their property line, but I believe the town is taking some steps to remedy those, those encroachments.
So if it isn't taken over maybe, and it has to stay, is there some fencing that's going to go around the house so that, you know, kids can't, I don't know, get out of the car and go over to the house? I don't know, for security reasons?
Um, under existing conditions, there is, there's the fence that encroaches onto the property. We're not calling for a fence to be put back there. If it is something that, you know, you guys feel strongly about, we can, we can add that to the plans without much of a problem, and, you know, if there's, you know, things like additional landscaping or things like that that you guys feel strongly about, we, you know, the town would definitely be willing to, to explore those options.
One other question. Do you feel that most of the parents will go along with the line rather than park the car and let the children get out? I could see in this, in the, you know, this parking lot, if they pull in and let their child out, he still has to cross over? Am I correct? Does he have to? If they park in that, the one on the right there, you know, say they come around, they park in there, where does the child have to walk to get through to the main entrance?
The path for all kids will basically be along a new sidewalk, along crosswalk, and generally we feel that...
So they don't have to cross that line of traffic?
No. There'll be a designated path that they'll be, they'll be walking on, and there'll be a new sidewalk that will be accessible for them.
Okay.
So their path will be, you know, outside of, of that queuing lane.
That's all I have.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I was once the councilman of the sixth district about, now I was aging myself, six years ago, back when I had a lot more hair. And now I'm the zoning commissioner in this district. I know for a long time that traffic safety has been a big issue at Nichols School, so first couple of my, to the point when I was meeting with constituents in this neighborhood, Wood Ave., North Ave., Dismarled Nichols, that some time ago, there actually was a fatality involving a Nichols Ave., a Nichols School student with traffic. I believe it was on the North Ave. side, if I'm not mistaken. This is going back some time ago, even before I was a councilman, so it certainly is warranted to look at, at the traffic situations. Well, I have a couple of questions. First is, when do you anticipate the, the heavy hours or the heavy times for drop off and pickup?
The pickup, or the, the drop off times, excuse me, is around 8:30. What we found was people drop off anytime between 8:00 and 8:30. It's more of a trickle-in effect, so they might have four or five people there, and then they leave, and then more people come in. So that scenario is not the most dangerous or the most concerning. It's the pickup times. During the pickup times, it, we found that there's roughly 20 to 25 people that could be there at a maximum. What we found was that not only are they filling up that existing parking lot, they're also spilling out onto North Ave., sometimes in both directions, also spilling out at times onto Nichols Ave., blocking up the intersection, making it hard for the people that do have to go and park on side streets to, to even use the, the crosswalks. So there, there's a great number of people, but around 20 to 25 was, was the maximum number of people there.
I'm very glad to see that there's a plan to limit as much as possible any sort of crossing across Nichols Ave., because the closer you get to Barnum Avenue, it's just blind corners. People don't know there's a school coming up if they're not from Stratford or, or from maybe a more remote part of town, so they're going down there 40, 50 miles per hour when they shouldn't be doing that. And you could have as much signage and speeding laws as you like, habits are habits, and until we have more police enforcement up there, it's going to be like that. So I'm, I'm glad to see less and less on Nichols Ave., just especially on the, the more south you go, the more dangerous it gets. My question though, however, is what sort of communication has this project had with the neighborhood, particularly North Avenue and, and maybe that end of Nichols by that intersection? Has there been any community meetings? Has there been any outreach of uncertified mailings to the abutting property owners? Because it is more traffic on Nichols. I mean, not on Nichols, on, on North Ave.
Yeah. What we did was, we had a workshop meeting, invited town staff, the police department, the, the staff that's been at the school for a number of years, you know, the principal. All of those people had recommendations about how these situations can, can operate, being how, you know, they're, they're dealing with it on a, on a daily basis. As far as reaching out to abutting property owners, you know, we, we didn't make any additional reaching out to them other than, you know, what's, what's put in the regulations, but we did do a, a couple of workshop meetings with town staff and police department to try to alleviate the concerns that the people that are kind of closest to this would have.
And I have two final questions. You said that the pickup time is usually when it's more intense. That's when there's more cars in one place at one time.
Yeah.
So say this is at a maximum pickup time. Say you have your 30 cars in there. How long do you think it's going to take for the last car that just enters in to cycle through, pick up their child, and then be able to egress back onto North Avenue?
Well, one of the, kind of the nice things about being able to have more cars in there is, as the students are able to come out, people are able to, to leave more easily than they are in their current situation. The timing that we measured under the current situation is that as people are getting there, and we found that, I believe that the dismissal time is around 3 o'clock, so people are still coming at 2:30, 2:45, 2:50, and, and building up in that queuing time. So we found that, you know, from 3:00 to 3:10, everyone's gone after 3:10. In this situation where we have a little bit more available room, it's going to be more efficient than, than even that, than that 10 minutes, because kids, kids are going to be able to go right to their car and not necessarily have to wait, you know, for somebody who's queued up on Nichols Ave. to turn onto North Ave. to, to try to get into the queue while people are also turning out at that situation. So we feel it's going to be much more efficient than, than even that 10-minute window that is the current situation.
Okay. And my, my final questions. In addition to what I just asked about the time, were you more inspired, like, how, how this project came to be? Wilcoxen School has one sort of pickup/drop off, and then there's Second Hill Lane, which has another sort of pickup and drop off. Which one of those do you think is better? And did you try to pivot this project towards, say, Second Hill or Wilcoxen based on those experiences?
So I'm not overly familiar with, with Wilcox, but we did, as an engineering firm, develop the Second Hill School Plan.
Okay.
So we are very familiar with how that one operates.
So you use the same sort of philosophy behind?
Generally, generally the same thing, because we did find that that one operates much more efficiently than, than it had previously, so.
Oh, and I forgot the, my final question, I'm sorry. Is there any sort of plan to discourage any sort of parking on Nichols over for streetscaping, signage, some sort of traffic enforcement? Because the real point of this is to alleviate pressure on Nichols North Avenue, to make the, the whole school safer for pickup and drop off. So is there any sort of plan to, to have some sort of discouragement of, of parking on Nichols for school pickup and drop off? Because some people still might do it out of habit.
Yeah. You know, what we've, we, we don't currently have any, any signage improvements or, or anything like that on Nichols Ave. What we're anticipating, and what we've found in the past on, on other projects, is by adding additional parking onsite, you're already going to have more people off, off of the road. Generally, with, with any of these school-type projects, in any bus loop or, or any pickup/dropoff, we find that there's a, a learning process, so there are going to be staff and, and teachers that are basically going to be shepherding the parents around to a point where they understand what the operations are.
Okay. So there'll, there'll be school staff immediately out there during pickup and dismissal times?
Yeah. Usually what we find is, you know, Ave. being as how it's an elementary school, and kids are there for several years, you know, after you teach them for a week or so, they, they generally get it. So it operates much more efficiently after, you know, a, a week or so of coaching.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. That's, that's it for my questions.
Mr. Rukuskas?
I just have a couple of questions about where the kids would actually be letting, getting out of the cars in here.
or, or, or anything like that on, on Nichols Ave. What, what we're anticipating, and what we've found in the past on, on other projects, is by adding additional parking onsite, you're already going to have more people off the, off of the road. Um, generally, with, with any of these school-type projects, um, in any bus loop or, or any pickup-drop off, we find that there's a, a learning process. So there are going to be staff and, and teachers that are basically going to be shepherding the parents around to a point where they understand what the operations are.
Okay. So there'll, there'll be school staff immediately out there during pickup and, and dismissal times?
Yeah. And usually what we find is, you know, after, being as how it's an elementary school, and kids are there for several years, um, you know, after you teach them for a week or so, they, they generally get it. Um, so it, it operates much more efficiently after, you know, a, a week or so of coaching.
Okay. Uh, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. That's, that's it for my questions.
Mr. Akasakis?
I just have a couple of questions about where the kids would actually be letting, getting out of the cars in here.
So going back to the, uh, the existing plan, or the existing facility, there is a, a basketball court located here, directly to the south of the existing parking lot. Um, generally, kids get dropped off, they walk through the basketball court and into the, uh, the entrance on the north side of the school located here. Um, under the post-conditions, generally the same situation, um, a longer area of, of queuing, where kids will be basically will be dropped off from the, where, area where there is existing concrete sidewalk to the end of where we have proposed concrete sidewalk.
Okay.
So at that point, kids would all be off of the roadway and then, and working their way back to the basketball court and into the school on the north side.
So nobody's being dropped off towards North Avenue, where you've got four cars showing, um, in, in the drawing. Nobody's being dropped off there. Those are cars that are leaving after dropping their kids off?
Yes, yes. The, you know, again, with kind of the, the coaching that's involved and how these operations go, you know, there'll, there'll be somebody out there that says, "You're not dropping kids off here." Dropping, dropping off. And there's a whole signage plan that, um, kind of shows where to drop kids off and, and those kinds of things.
Yeah, because that would really clog things up if you go to the two, two-way street there and you've got people dropping them off. You'd probably need to make that clear to everybody. Um, also, when you mentioned how many cars could be in queue, you did include those four that are really after the queue. They're on their way out. So there's more like twenty-one cars, I think, if it was what, uh-
Yeah, I mean, that's, this is a, a maximum situation. We, we do think that, for the most part, it's going to be around that twenty-vehicle situation. And again, being as how, it's going to be a more efficient practice, um, having the bypass lane for people. Once their kid is in the car, they can go and the next person can move up. That, it'll be very rare that we will have, you know, that many people there.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Giuliano?
Good evening. The light on the corner of North and-
Nichols?
Nichols, is that going to stay the same? Because will that be, have to coordinate with the in and out? Because it's kind of a treacherous corner at some times to get in and out of there, beating the light. So that impact, what I'm trying to get at, is people coming in and going out of this new parking garage, uh, parking lot?
Yeah. Uh, we're not anticipating or proposing any changes to the signal, uh, itself. Um, generally, the, the plan is to get people off of the street as much as possible and to let them out in a way to, so that if anyone, if any of the school buses are leaving Nichols, that they can, you know, maneuver through the traffic signal itself. And, and instead of having a situation that currently happens where people are backed up and all over the place, but by getting them off the road, it'll, it'll open things up quite a bit.
And that, on Nichols in front of the school, there's a little pull-in area. That'll still stay there, right around where the trees are? Yeah. Yeah, there's like a little pull-off for people to drop off their children too there. That'll stay still, right?
Um, that, that one will remain the same, but that is used strictly for, for bus drop-off.
That's the bus and everything, correct.
Yeah. So no, no parents will-
Yeah, you'll get a ticket.
-be in that area. Anyone who tries to pull in there will be basically yelled at and told to get in line.
Yeah, all right. Yeah, I just, just going back to that light, because isn't, uh, Nichols is a state highway, isn't it, one oh eight?
Yeah.
So that corner there, that light, usually they only give you thirteen seconds. I'm sure, hopefully, that they're giving us more as North Ave, North Ave crosses it. That's a thirteen-second light. So you're lucky to get four to six cars through there. So that, that's my concern, because of that, and trying to get in and out of there, especially where the in is, is going to always be the in. And that's, you know, right, just right off the corner of North and Nichols.
So, the mystery here, we're talking about, so-
Yes.
-under the proposed conditions, by, by moving where the entrance exit's going to be, that's going to allow for more queuing space on the roadway and to make the, the signal that currently is there work more efficiently. Uh, but we're not proposing any changes to the signal itself.
Okay. No, thank you.
Good. I have a few questions, if you bear with me. And just for clarity, looking at this map you have in front of you, the entrance goes around, and remember you said that there was a, a pull-out lane? I'm trying to remember the terminology.
A bypass.
Bypass. There's a bypass lane, which I think that's the lane that has the arrows in?
Yes.
Is that the bi- okay. When I follow that arrow to the right-hand corner, right-most corner, it looks like it then collides into the northbound or entrance of the second entrance. What I'm looking at, it looks like it's trying to merge those two lanes into the one outbound driveway. Is that correct?
So what we've done in that situation is through our signage plan, we've created a, a stop condition there. So there'll be a stop bar, stop signs on both sides, says, you know, merging traffic. Um, also on the opposite side, there's signage to say, "You have to turn in." Um, but by having a, a stopping condition, you know, you're basically going to be in a parking lot, um, in this, in the same way that, you know, most parking lots operate, that one person stops, the next person goes, kind of thing. Um-
That makes me very uncomfortable, because what I see, and I go through this area, and first of all, let me preference it by saying, I'm really happy that we're moving forward on doing something. I pass through there an awful lot, and I'm usually the one that's stuck behind the light that Mr. Giuliano was just talking about. However, when you have two lanes that are merging, in the morning, when parents need to get to work, they're not necessarily focused on a little sign there that says, "Stop," because there's merging traffic. And they want to get out, get the kid gone, and they want to take off. If there is oncoming traffic in that same, literally lineage, that seems to be an accident waiting to happen that would then require a police or a parent or a teacher to sit there and become a traffic cop. Is there some other way that you could design it so that it's a clear pathway through, that it's a clear line of a bypass?
So, a, a couple of points to that. Is, um, the first being that, as far as people coming in and out, the, the main times that people would be coming in, um, we would want them to come in, obviously, through the, the entrance only. Um, seeing your point that there is an entrance only here, we could do potentially a, a couple of things. Um, one, potentially restricting that movement in, um, during pickup and drop-off times. Um, one is, people are, what they're talking with the drop-off time, they're still going to want to come in here and park and go out. At that point, we can, you know, keep more cars away from there.
There's no other way to get another, um, entrance just for the parking lot separately?
So if we were to, say, come out of this location, the sidelines around the corner here are not adequate enough to be able to have an exit in that situation. Um, so that's why we're having the entrance here. What we could potentially do is make all of the entrance through the, the side on North Ave and restrict this to exit only. You know, that, that would-
That would alleviate that.
... lane situation.
So anybody coming in who wanted to go to the parking lot would simply have to just drive around until they got to the other side?
Yes.
Okay. That, that would make more sense to me, um, instead of the other condition that's there. All right. Um, walkways, the walkway from that, it's kind of existing now. You're putting in a new sidewalk, going straight down to the school, and then you're running it into the existing walkway that's there to the school. Right. Is there any improvement that's going to be made on that walkway? Uh, are they going to repave it, make it bigger, make it nicer?
Um, right now, mainly due to the, the budgetary concerns, we're trying to maintain as much of that existing concrete there as possible. Uh, we'll be reworking it to make it ADA accessible for the, the handicap, um, handicap parking spaces. And there'll be a more formalized entrance, uh, and, and merging location, um, and this crosswalk that we had here for, for the accessibility route. Um, but, a-again, we're trying to maintain that, that concrete there.
That's one area concerned. Another area concern is along North Avenue. Um, the sidewalk that is there is old, needs to be redone. And it's also narrow. It's a typical home width sidewalk. What I found on any school, kids congregate wherever they get dropped off or picked up. They just congregate. I anticipate along North Avenue, there would be some students who would be congregating along the front or along North Avenue, mostly because parents who don't feel like going through the loop are going to kind of speed by, drop the kids off, and try to hit the light before it changes. Is there any possibility that we could widen that sidewalk and make it safer so that there is more protection for the students?
Um, I think what we could do, um, and when we, we did go out and kind of, kind of walk through and see that there are some, some sections of sidewalk that are definitely in, in need of repair. Um, as part of the bidding process, we could definitely put in there a, um, you know, an alternate to, to see how much of the sidewalk can be redone. Um, currently, we're calling for the, the sidewalks at the curb cuts to be, to be redone. Um, and as far as the, the, the distance from those areas that you might want to have improved, um, I mean, we, we, we could put that into the bid as, as, as an alternate to see if it's, you know, within the town's budget to be able to, to do those improvements, for sure.
Okay. And then the ball field. Now, I know the ball field isn't used very much as a ball field. It used to be, but we're losing our ball fields. I'm concerned that we're losing even more of a ball field, um, with this design. Have you spoken to anybody about that use of the ball field and the impact?
So are you in reference to this large grass area here, or the actual-
Yes. The actual ball field, yes.
Um, so we, we don't feel that we're going to really have any impact on that, to be quite honest with you. The way that the site kind of is set up is it's, it gradually slopes down, and then there's a, a much steeper drop off down to the field. We're going to try to maintain all of our improvements on that kind of higher area where that existing slope sort of creates a natural break between the, the ball field and where our proposed improvements would be.
Now, I know the students who play on that field are young, but we've got a couple of good hitters. And I could see them hitting some balls that would fly into the parking lot or fly into that walk, in that drop-off area, especially during games when, again, parents are dropping off their students for the different games and so forth. Is there any consideration of how to prevent, uh, balls from hitting or running into the parking lot or running into the walkway?
Um, currently, there is, there is a backstop that's there that will, will help to get a lot of the, you know, the foul balls. Um, in situations where we're having-
Well, they're going to be hitting out. I understand the backstop, I got that. But hitting out-
Hit it here, right?
Yep.
Your own place?
Yep.
Shouldn't be hitting generally in this direction. Many balls that are fall off this way-
That's the ones I'm worried about.
Should be stopped by the backstop. And, you know, a couple of cases where it's not currently going to happen. You know, we could put some signage up that, you know, it's more or less a, a park at your own risk kind of thing. Um, you know, there's really not too much else you can do to kind of stop foul balls. They, they kind of just happen in, I think, in most situations when you're going to, uh, to a ball field, there's sort of inherent knowledge that-
I know.
-you, you could potentially catch a carby by ball.
I have quite a few dents. Have you spoken to anyone, um, in recreation or the leagues or so forth, just to review that with them, to make sure that there aren't any other issues that should be considered that we may not know ourselves?
Um, you know, I'm not even fully sure. Does the town use that field for, for recreation games yet?
Soccer.
For schools to soccer?
I know what you're talking about, it's a practice field, you know, it's a golf game.
Uh, I'm not aware that the town uses that to play much in the way of games, other than during school things or-
It's a, it's a practice field.
Practice field.
It's just a practice field.
Okay.
They do, they do some softball there, but it's a practice field. They do a lot of soccer. I heard somebody say soccer. It's used, it's just, yeah, it's, it's, it's an everything field, but it's a practice field. It's never really been configured well. In fact, my second fear is it's less used for baseball, or, sorry, softball, than it is for soccer. And I haven't been around the field enough to know how much of that field is going to be impacted by the, the casual play. So maybe later on, you can, somebody here might be able to answer that.
Yeah, I, I apologize, but I don't have a great answer for that.
Okay.
Nothing was brought up in the workshop meeting that we had with town staff or-
Okay. All my other questions were answered, lights and things like that, Mr. Giuliano, Mr. Fuller, everybody else captured. So I don't really have any additional. Ms. Peppin?
Yeah, I just have one comment, uh, or two. Um, that second lane that we're talking about, what did you call it? I'm sorry.
Bypass.
Bypass. You don't assume that it's going to be as many cars as in the, as in the drop-off lane, correct? They're not going to be doubled all the way down that?
No, and, and whoever-
It's just if somebody's, then they can pull out and go in that lane and, and leave. Is there any way that, you have this coming in to both entrances of that parking lot. Is there any way that maybe just do the first? Because then you've got, you've got the curve to stop them.
Well, what, what happened was, and, and we're digressing a little bit, when I worked on the Victoria Soto School, exactly the same idea, for the same exact reason of getting more cars queued up, we put a bypass lane in. And what we found is parents-
Double anyway.
They doubled anyway.
Doubled anyway.
It was, you know, and the, and the, the teachers and everybody would do their best to try to remind them that it's a bypass lane, but they took it as a second lane to speed even faster, to drop off their kids and zip out. So it's-
I understand.
I would rather, his first idea of making it a one-way, and then it's a little more controllable. I, I think that's an easy answer for, for what we're looking at.
Okay.
We're only looking at things to try to make sure that we thought of safety-
Sure.
-and, and that we put as much into that thought as possible.
Yeah. We, we have no issue with changing the, changing the, uh, the entrance exit around to just, just have it as exit only. Um, you know, I don't see a problem with that.
If we want it more investment, more priority, put against the sidewalks, both the walkway and the sidewalks around to improve them, because they really are in bad shape. And, and that kind of goes across all of our schools, not just Nichols, all right? What would have to happen for that? What does that mean to you? What would have to happen?
Um, so gen- the, the first priority for, for this was to get people off of the road, try to create a safe environment as, as we can. Um, so mainly, the first one being, um, a, a better queuing area for, for parents. Second concern being, um, having enough parking for, for staff and visitors and, and other people that would be coming to the site. Um, and as, as a third thing, we, we could then look at improving the sidewalks around there. Um, and, and what I think probably the best situation would be that, um, the, the town could work with would be to put into the plan, um, a, a bid alternate, as you will.
An ad alternate.
So that, you know, the contractor could, the, the town could basically go and, and pick what spots they wanted. So, you know, we'll put an allowance in there for, um, concrete sidewalk work, so that, you know, if, if this is the major area of concern, that the town can improve that, that width, or if there's this whole length or, or, you know, along Nichols, um, we could put a budgetary number in there to, um, to, to work with you guys to, as the highest priority areas.
And you said there's no additional signage that you see that's necessary?
Uh, we've put together a pretty extensive signage situat- signage plan, um, it's included in the package there.
Okay.
Um, and internally, there's, there's-
Yes, there are.
-a great deal. Um, and under normal situations, when it's not the, the pickup and drop-off time, uh, I think that light works pretty well. Um, so by being able to get people off of the road, it'll allow for, for the, the signal to, to work as, to the efficiency that it's supposed to. Um, so really don't see that there's an extensive amount of off road, off-site signage.
I, I may agree with Mr. Giuliano that I do have some concerns about the traffic light, and we may just ask, the police- and we may just ask the police department to work with the state, because it is a state road, to just check the signaling on it, to see if there's some improvement, but that can be done internally. Would you agree?
I'd agree a hundred percent. Once we go into admin, we can make a step on that.
Yeah, we can look at that, just to have them check it, make sure.
Just to double-check it, yeah.
Right.
Even if they, even on the inner part where you're talking, maybe they could put some flashings in there for that...
Right.
That bypass lane, just so they can keep being reminded.
That sounds good. Because Nichols, Nichols is turning into a speedway at times, and it, it's concerning.
You can definitely have that, you know?
I don't have any other questions. Does anybody else here have any other questions? Okay, at this point, I'm going to turn it over and ask the public to comment. Thank you very much.
I'll, I'll leave the boards for...
Excellent, thank you. If anybody would like to speak in favor of this application, please come forward. Thank you.
Hi, how are you? Good evening, my name is Megan Galan, and I live at 231 Swanson Ave. in Stratford. I am one of the co-presidents of the Nichols School PTA. I'm here tonight to lend support to the plans for a new car loop at Nichols. The plan we are endorsing tonight will greatly improve the safety of our school for the staff and our children as they come and go from Nichols, as well as improve the logistics and traffic pattern in the morning, which I know a bunch of you have already referenced as being an issue that you've seen as well. If you've ever had the pleasure, though, of passing the intersection of Nichols and North, anywhere between 7:45 and 8:15, or between 2:00 and 3:00 in the afternoon, you'll notice the mass of cars and buses bringing students to and from Nichols. You might also notice the complete log jam, with exiting cars unable to turn onto North Ave. as the other cars arrive to drop off students. A single car trying to make a left out of the lot can cause a backup that snarls the entire traffic pattern for several minutes at a time. On top of the traffic concerns and the frustration caused amongst parents as they try to get their kids to school, and often head to work straight from drop-off, you can imagine how unsafe the situation can be at times, given the Walker students, as you've referenced, crossing Nichols, as many do, and their parents also doing the same. If you've had the pleasure of witnessing this, you would also know how serious this is. Of all the things parents come to us as PT officers, this is certainly one of the top issues that parents come to us with, and we've been pushing for this for men, as long as, at least, I've been at Nichols. And as you said, it's been a lot longer than even that. The next issue that this new construction would fix is the parking. On any given day, you can see staff and parents parked around Nichols School, on all the side streets, all around Nichols, on Nichols, and we recognize that that's not safe, but there really isn't anyplace else to park. That raises serious concerns for students and adult safety, as well as concerns and damage to vehicles, which I personally have had that happen. Picture all of this after a snowstorm, so if you can think of a couple of weeks ago when we had all that storm, all that snow. You can't see around those corners, so we've got cars driving, you know, 50, 60 miles, unfortunately, down sometimes, around, down Nichols, and you can't see. You can't see, the cars can't see pulling out, and pulling, you know, the kids can't see either. So, kids trying to get in and out of vehicles is really a concern that we all have. With the new Board of Ed Preferred Lot, we will bring our number of parking spots from 49 to 98, allowing our staff of close to 80, and the many visitors we have to our building, parent volunteers, other volunteers within the classroom, and parents coming in for meetings and things like that, to park in a protected area. The Board of Ed Preferred Lot will address all of these issues in one single solution. The concept of a new car loop, as I said, has been around for a really, really long time, due to the safety concerns of parents, staff, students. We've often had the police officers, I know that was referenced at one point, we've, parents have called regularly to have police come and witness what's happening, because it really is unsafe. And as I said, it only takes one trip to do that, to see that in the morning or the afternoon, and you would really see the concern that we're all really worried about. So, from all of our officers, we really ask that you continue to support this project. We appreciate the support that you've already kind of recognized this evening. We've waited a really, really long time for this to happen, and our concern is really the well-being of our staff and students. So, we thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Would, would anybody else like to add their voice of support? Just a round of applause, that's good. Would...
Sign his support.
Sign his supporters, yes. Would anybody like to speak in opposition to this plan? Is anybody opposed?
Good evening, I'm Catherine Vanneke, Director of Honey Bear Learning Center, 1498 North Avenue. Do want to say thank you for granting our extension. We did start renovations this week, so we're very excited for that. I don't necessarily come in opposition, I have some concerns. The parking will be in front of our property, and so, you know, currently, we have, as, you know, many people have said before, parking on both sides of North Avenue, as much as there are no parking signs. On our planting strip, we have rocks that we've painted white to keep parents from parking on our planting strips, because we have to keep re-grassing.
Ms. Vanneke, could you just, for our commissioners, just point on this map, if you could, where you're located, if you, if you see yourself?
Let's see, here, here. I'm sorry, I'm running time. Oh, perfect, this is okay. So, this is our driveway here.
Okay.
And then this is the sidewalk to the house. So, can I flip this, sir?
Um, no, you're in front of it.
What's in front? I can get to see your picture, I'm sorry. Which one is that, prediction? Is it this one here?
Yep, so these are just the conditions boards.
Okay, so, good, thanks. Thank you. This is the, this is the... So, I think the driveway is coming out, the new driveway is not here. So, again, I, I don't have opposition, I just have some, you know, some questions. And as far as, you know, I heard the bypass lanes and, and things like that. So, my concern is the coming out, is that going to be, I know you talked about a few different things, is that gonna be, you can enter in the new driveway, you can enter in and exit out? Is that correct?
Well, let me try to answer, and, and the applicant will have a chance to come back and answer it again afterwards. But, from my understanding, is that we're discussing as one idea of having it a one-directional U, where we would come in on one side of North Avenue and exit probably closest to your place...
Okay.
To your driveway.
Okay.
So that would be the U circle.
Okay. Thank you. And then I heard there was a signage plan. Again, there are no parking signs, they're not, they're not obeyed by specific, you know, certain people. The concern I do have is that parents will pull, because I believe the current driveway, I think it's no, no left turn or no right turn, I'm not sure, I'm sorry, but they'll come and they'll pull in into our apron and they'll back out. That blocks our parents from getting in. We are self-sufficient, we park on our, on our own property, we don't park on, on North Avenue. We also have parents who come in and we have a circular driveway, so they will go completely around the drive. So I'm concerned, coming out, that if traffic is held up because of the light situation, then we might continue to have this situation. And then also, I'm concerned that our driver would be blocked. So, I'm looking for, you know, more parking signs. Again, I heard the word signage plan. So I'm looking for more no parking signs, you know, maybe do not turn in our driveway, do not block our driveway, and then, you know, again, police presence to enforce it for the parents who are not, you know, following the rules. Again, that's really all I have to say. I'm, I think this is a great idea, I think this will help things. I'm just looking for some consideration as far as not inconvenience my, my families to get into our, into our property.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who would like to express an opinion? If not, I'm gonna ask the applicant, you have an opportunity to rebut or explain and maybe get Ms. Vanneke's number.
Again, Chris Hulk, on behalf of the applicant, professional engineer from Long Island, Rhode Island. So, what I've been informed is that, at the beginning of the school year, the teachers do let the parents know that they're not supposed to park on North Ave., and not supposed to, to block that section. Unfortunately, right now, with the limited number of parking spaces that they have, people it's, it's gonna do whatever they want, it's kind of free-for-all. We're hoping that, under the proposed conditions and adding, you know, a situation where we have a total of 96 parking spaces for a staff of somewhere between 70 and 80, that people will have the ability to have a parking space, so they won't be forced to park along North Ave. And there'll also be, you know, an additional 20, 16, times 25 parking spaces for visiting people or, or parents, so, again, they, they won't have to, you know, result to the things that they're doing now.
Is there a plan, or can there be a plan to put no parking along North Avenue, particularly in front of the driveways, or at least do not block the driveway signs?
Sure. We have, we have no problem adding a couple more signs for, for some more no parking and, and, you know, no, no, no blocking the existing driveways kinda thing. It's not a problem.
Okay.
Can I, can I?
Mr. Giuliano?
Sure. It might be a little irrelevant or whatever, but the in-out side over there to the daycare center, offhand, would you know how many feet away you are from her driveway? Because it's like, hard to tell in the picture, and I can't remember when I was there, but I did notice that, but I wasn't sure.
Right across?
Yeah. Just trying to figure out if they're...
Right across.
Right across, are they 20 feet, 80 feet? It's kinda hard to tell, I know, and like you says, it probably wasn't in anybody's idea for that. Just something to think about, then.
Where?
There, there...
See, go ahead.
Their location is...
Right there.
Here?
Yep, and we're there.
This is, this area here, here?
Yeah.
A little over 100 feet, 120 feet, maybe?
That much? 120 feet?
I have to look around that.
We probably do, too.
We do. Not, not, not any...
All right.
I, 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 I think it's reasonable, I, my own...
Well, that's what I was trying to get at, or we...
I think it's reasonable.
Yeah. That's what I was trying to get at.
I, I'm, after doing this Soto School project, I'm just amazed how far parents will drop off their kids and let them walk. It's just amazing. I, I don't know how to explain it. So, okay. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much. With that, I'm gonna ask for a motion to close the public hearing. By Mr. Fuller?
I'll second.
And Ms. Peppin, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes yes, passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, text on the amendment. It's text amendment. Mr. Giuliano, I think it's your turn for the number three, the text amendment. Folks, please, please, thank you. The next property would be read by Mr. Giuliano.
Text amendment, petition of S.H.D. Hawley LLC, seeking to add new text to 6.3 regarding the OPD District.
Thank you very much. And...
Did you get the, you didn't get a second one, right? We didn't get a second one, all right? Yeah, that's the one.
Yeah.
I guess I have a couple of ways. Did you want this one? This has been, all this stuff on top is new, and then everything under is...
Got it. Yep, we got it. Just giving them a, a chance to get together. Thank you.
Good evening, for the record, my name is Lisa Feinberg. I'm an attorney with Carmody, Torrance, Sandak, and Hennessy. We have offices in Stamford, New Haven, Waterbury, Litchfield, and Southbury. I believe we need to start by reading the planning board referral letter into the record. Is that accurate, Mr. Hapinski?
The, I'm sorry, I was actually looking through my notes. The planning recommendation letter?
Yes.
Sure. So, what I'll be reading is the planning recommendation letter from the evening of March 21st. Madam Chair, at its regularly scheduled meeting on March 21st, 2017, the Planning Commission considered the referral from the Zoning Commission regarding the proposed text change to amend Section 6.3 of the zoning regulations regarding the Office Park District. The Planning Commission voted to refer the proposed text amendment back to the Zoning Commission with a favorable recommendation for, for approval, based on the following reasons. The proposed amendment is consistent with the town of Stratford's 2013 Plan of Conservation and Development's recommendation to update the zoning regulations regarding the Office Park District. The Planning Commission has the following recommendations for the Zoning Commission to consider, should it decide to approve the subject text amendment. Number one, any new development within the OPD District should be required to have a mixed-use component. Mixed use should be allowed in all existing buildings within the OPD District. Number two, the Zoning Commission should closely evaluate the traffic study and should require an independent traffic study be done if deemed necessary. Number three, the Zoning Commission should consider reducing the proposed density to 20 bedrooms, to 20 bedrooms for every 40,000 square feet of lot area. The zoning commi, number four, the Zoning Commission should consider reducing the allowable height from the, the proposed eight stories to six stories. Number five, there should be close consideration as to the impact the proposed text amendment will have on the school system and school transportation system, specifically, school bus access and, school bus access to the proposed development. Number six, things to consider should a special case application be applied for. A, there should be close consideration as to how future development may impact the watershed as a result of the proposed text amendment. B, pending consideration from the Conservation Administrator, natural trails and pedestrian access should be considered to the conservation area on-site. C, a second egress should be considered to, to support the access of emergency apparatus. It was discussed at length that the OPD District should be considered for other areas in town, most notably within the Employment Growth District, identified with the Plan of Conservation and Development Stratford Vision Plan, along Lordship Boulevard in the general vicinity of the airport, P.O.C.D., page 17. The Planning Commission would like to thank you for your consideration on this matter, and remains available for any further questions.
Quick question on the, the Planning Commission. Did receive the minutes of the Planning Commission, the public records, was, just for public record, though, for public disclosure, was it unanimous vote?
No.
Was there any reason given for, for minority opinion?
Uh, yes. It was traffic study, there were concerns with traffic. Well, I should actually, all the concerns that were listed in the potential recommendations...
So, so the dissenting vote cited those reasons as opposition for it?
Correct.
Um, this, the planning recommendation, and just for the public record, the planning recommendation in response was emailed to all of the commission members. All the letters that we received were also provided to all the commission members and to the applicant as well. So, we've tried to do a thorough job of making sure that everybody has received all the information in a timely manner. So, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you can see from the full room behind me, there's been a considerable amount of interest in this application. So, I have a bunch of folks on the team here with me tonight, in hopes that we will be able to address any and all concerns that are articulated tonight. So I just want to introduce the people who are with me tonight. So, from my office, Bill Hennessy and Jason Klein, Eric Rains from Eric Rains Landscape Architecture. Eric studied the topography and the massing of, of a potential building on the site. George Purim from Antonazi Associates, he created the massing, and the massing is based on the text amendment that we proposed, so a conceptual building that could theoretically be put on the site based on this text amendment. Stephen Olman from Alfred Benich and Company... Stephen Ullman from Alfred Benich and Company, he prepared the traffic report that has been submitted to you all, and we are all here on behalf of the owner, S.H.D. Hawley LLC, represented by Jerry Kiley and Greg Shaughnessy, both seated behind me. So, as I said, all these folks are here to answer any questions you have. They will come up as necessary, but I will probably take the lead in terms of the presentation. Before we get started, I just wanted to note for everyone in the room that we are here tonight in connection with a proposal to amend the OPD, the Office Park District zone, to permit a mixed-use development on the site. We are not here in connection with a specific proposal. We have not submitted a site plan application, we have not submitted a special case application. All we have submitted, the only thing before you, is a text amendment to the OPD zone. So, any plans that have been provided to you are purely conceptual in nature, just to get, they were meant to be illustrative, so you had an idea of what could theoretically go on the site, but they are not by any means the development plan. Right now, we're simply asking for approval to modify the OPD zone so that we can then come back and ask you for the right to develop something specific. And the primary reason that we, we did it this way, that we separated the process, was that we could get some guidance from the neighbors, from the commissioners, from the Planning Commission, before a ton of money is spent, before architectural drawings are developed, and civil drawings, and studies, and application fees. I mean, that's, that's a considerable investment. And while the Plan of Conservation and Development provides guidance for us, and we certainly drafted the text amendment based on the Plan of Conservation and Development, there is no substitute for real-time feedback from the neighbors and the commissioners. So, that's, that's why we've proceeded this way. So, before we dive into the text amendment, I just want to start by quickly orienting you to the site. The OPD zone, can you all hear me okay without this? The OPD zone consists of a thirty-four acre parcel. It's located at ninety-nine Hawley Lane. So, this is Hawley Lane, here, Nicholas Run, this way, this is Armory, this is Plain Tree, just to give you a little bit of an orientation. The entire property is thirty-four acres. It's known as the Merit Eight Corporate Park, and it's located in the OPD, as I mentioned. It is the only OPD in the entire town of Stratford. There were previously other areas, but this is the only one that is remaining. And it's technically one property, but it was part of a condominium, so while it's one thirty-four acre site, there are, there are three units on the property. It was declared as a condominium back in nineteen ninety. So, unit one is at the front piece of the property, and that's what you see here. So, again, this is Hawley Lane, and this is the Merit Eight Corporate Office Building that exists today on unit one. Unit one consists of about nine acres. It's, it is improved with a hundred and sixty thousand square foot office building and a large parking garage. The other colors that you see outlined here are common elements, part of the condominium declaration. Now, as you proceed further south, that's when you get into units two and three, and that's the property that my clients purchased. Outline here, as you can see, most of the property is shown in this light gray area, and that's, that's to denote the conservation area. The whole parcel, the whole unit, rather, units two and three, consists of about twenty-five acres, but of those twenty-five acres, seventeen of them are dedicated as conservation area, and I'm just going to outline that for you all here. So, this area here is the only area on the site that remains that is not dedicated as conservation. And within this conservation area, there's about ten acres that are actual wetlands. So, ten that are wetlands, another seven were dedicated as conservation, seventeen point three in total. So, the existing office building that you see out there today was part of a larger development that was approved by the commission back in the nineteen eighties. That building was developed, there were two other office buildings that were approved and were never developed. Subsequently, in around two thousand, again, they came back in and said, "We'd like to develop the back portion of the site with one office building," and this time, they proposed a hundred and ten thousand square foot office building, also approved on the back piece. And it was in connection with that approval that the seventeen acres was required as a conservation easement. So, that was part of the inland wetlands approval in connection with the hundred and ten thousand square foot office building. So, in two thousand and three, notwithstanding the fact that they had not moved forward with the office building, they dedicated those seventeen acres as conservation area. You have the conservation, no building was actually ever constructed. So, Jerry and Greg purchased the property around October of two thousand and fifteen, and their plan is to develop it with, with luxury apartments. And when I say develop it, develop the portion outside of the conservation area. So, if the text amendment is approved, they would proceed with finalizing the design of the building and submit applications for site plan and special case approval, and of course, that would come back before you all. So, while a final plan hasn't been designed, I can tell you that they are currently anticipating a proposal that would include around three hundred units with parking that would be located below the building. So, it'd be parking with a podium, and as you've seen in the drawings that have been submitted, four towers that go on top of the podium. So, that's just, that's just a massing design that is a potential possibility, something for discussion. They're also toying with the idea of having some sort of restaurant or commercial component. In fact, as Mr. Habsinski noted in the referral letter, that's something that the Planning Commission really wants to see on the site, so my clients are certainly open to that. Because residential use is not currently permitted in the OPD zone, the proposed text amendment adds the use to the zone and also proposes a specific set of standards for mixed-use development. This is something that is highly encouraged in the town, the Plan of Conservation and Development, and as I mentioned, we were guided by that. So, importantly, I just want to note that the seventeen acres of conservation area would remain, and no structures would be proposed within that area. And then, in terms of the proposed standards, most of the existing OPD underlying zoning standards would continue to apply, including the larger setbacks that are required from residential zones. In the OPD zone, you have to be set back a hundred feet from an abutting RS zone, so that would continue to apply. The primary changes relate to building height, obviously adding residential density, and then the calculation of lot area. So, in response to the Planning Commission's letter, we have proposed a modified version of the text, and I'm not sure, was that distributed already, Mr. Habsinski? We have copies.
It was, it was emailed to the commission.
Do you all have it? Because we have hard copies here as well.
Why don't you provide us with the copies? It was emailed, but I don't know if everybody had a chance to print it to bring with them.
So, what you have here is a redlined version of what was originally submitted, so the red just denotes the changes that were made in response to the Planning Commission's comments. I'll wait for everybody to get a copy before we move through it. So, the first set of changes at the top is really our attempt to react to the Planning Commission's concern about mixed-use development, and this is really up for discussion. The way that the text was originally written, at least from my perspective, having been the drafter, was that these standards only apply to a mixed-use development in the OPD zone, so that if you want to avail yourself to these standards, you have to have multiple uses, commercial and residential. I think the Planning Commission's concern was that maybe the language wasn't strong enough, and that they wanted to ensure that you had mixed-use development. So, what I've done here is I've made it clear that each building in the OPD zone would be mixed-use. I don't know if that's the, the best solution. It may be better to leave it the way that it was, so that you don't have to have mixed-use in every single building within a zone, as long as you have the mixture of uses in the zone itself, so that you could build a residential building and a restaurant next to it, or it gives you a little bit more flexibility in terms of planning. But again, whatever you all feel is most appropriate, we are comfortable with. So, that's what all of that language relates to. I also added language related to adaptive reuse of existing buildings, because that was something that was noted in the Planning Commission's letter. So, I think, unless you all feel otherwise, that we can just move through the text amendment in general, and then I can comment on the, on the changes. So, the next section is, is lot area, and the biggest change here is that we have asked to include conservation land as part of lot area. Other, in, in the standard definition, it would be excluded. And importantly, this is conservation area, so in order to be able to include it, it has to actually be dedicated as conservation. It can't just be wetlands. It has to be a dedicated conservation area. And the thought process behind this is that by excluding conservation area, wetlands, all of that from lot area, it's sort of, it disincentivizes someone from dedicating conservation area. So, that in this situation, where a property owner went ahead and dedicated seventeen acres, sixty-eight percent of the parcel, as conservation, in return, they have a much smaller portion, portion of the, of the site that they can actually utilize for purposes of development, and that just doesn't, it seems a little counterintuitive. I guess this, we want to make sure that developers aren't penalized for preserving environmentally sensitive area, and so we've asked to include it for purposes of calculation only. You can't actually build on it. Lot coverage, fifty percent impervious, fifty percent open space, that is the same as the underlying OPD zone. Residential density, originally proposed at thirty bedrooms per forty thousand square feet, at the Planning Commission's suggestion, we have reduced that to twenty bedrooms per forty thousand square feet. And the standard, the original standard, and the standard for that matter, was created after studying your regulations, and there's no one way that res, that higher end, sorry, higher density residential is handled in your regulations. It's handled multiple ways. So, in the RM one, LB, LBB, CA, CNC, it's eleven and a half units per forty thousand square feet. In the RM one, if you're adaptively reusing a building, like at two twenty-five Lordship, it's fifteen hundred square feet per lot area. So, fifteen hundred square feet of lot area per unit, rather, I'm sorry. So, that's a, that's a higher density. And then, of course, in the TOD, it's fifty bedrooms per forty thousand square feet. Certainly, we are not suggesting that the density on this site should be the same as a, as a TOD, but we thought that using bedrooms instead of a unit count is a better way to control the number of people actually on the property. If you guys feel otherwise, we are happy to discuss that as well. So, as I said, we instituted the twenty per, twenty bedrooms per forty thousand square feet, because the Planning Commission thought that was the best number. Commercial F.R., point two five, that's the same as the underlying OPD. Maximum building height, as originally proposed, we suggested eighty feet. We've brought that down to seventy feet, which is ten feet taller than what you could build there today. In the underlying OPD zone, you can build a sixty-foot office building. We're asking for seventy feet at this point. And again, part of the reason for that is because sixty-eight percent of this site is dedicated as conservation area. We can't go out, so we'd like to go up a little bit. It also gives us a little bit of flexibility to create the type of higher-end development that, that, that we're proposing by giving some more height at the ground level for some sort of retail space, and also some more height in the actual residential units. It's also in keeping with the Plan of Conservation and Development, which suggests a height of eight stories. But I want to note that just because the, if the commission says, "Okay, we think that seventy feet may be appropriate on this site, but what if another site, we rezone a piece of property as suggested by the Planning Commission into the OPD, and that site is not appropriate, it's not appropriate to have a seventy-foot building." This is not a carte blanche. Special case, has to come back to you if you think it's inappropriate. It's inappropriate. Parking, one, one point two five spaces per one bedroom or less, two spaces for two or three bedrooms. We've also asked for the opportunity to request sharing between commercial and residential uses. That would be by special case as well. If we can demonstrate that it makes sense, it's, it's good, because you're not overbuilding a site with more parking than you need. And then, the last component is a sustainability component, and that's completely new to the zone. And it's a requirement that the developer incorporate environmentally sensitive building practices. This is something that your P.O.C.D. has suggested implementing throughout the regulations, and so we have included that. So, that's really it in terms of the text amendment. As I mentioned, we have a team of folks here today to answer any questions. We're happy to, to go to your questions now and answer them, or if you'd like to turn to the public, however, however you all would like to handle it.
Thank you. I think I'm going to begin with the questions to the commissioners, and then we'll kind of roll from there, if that's okay with you.
Absolutely.
Mr. Fuller?
Oh, no. Oh, questions to the commission. Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. Oh, thank you, Madam Counsel, and if there's another member of your team that's more appropriate to answer the question, please feel free to have whoever's the best person to answer the question speak. This is quite a, quite an interesting text amendment, to say the least. I have a couple of questions that are grave concern to me, so I'll, I'll try to get from them as much as possible, to maybe some follow-up questions to them. We hear adherence or in, in alignment to the Plan of Conservation and Development a lot, P.O.C.D. P.O.C.D. says a lot of things. It's hundreds of, it's over a hundred recommendations to the town on how to develop, how to preserve ecological or historically relevant parts of town, what sort of developments appropriate, and where, what sort of social and cultural identity Stratford would like to have, or ought to have, or should encourage and develop. So, it could be interpreted in many different ways. Where you're suggesting that there is adherence to the P.O.C.D., I see a complete violation of the P.O.C.D., and I want to hear your thoughts on how that maybe a different interpretation, different perspective on it could answer this question. In the P.O.C.D., it's often stated that we should not encourage commercial getting switched to residential unless it's in a redevelopment area. This is not necessarily redevelopment. There's a lot of open space here, there's a lot of residential properties here. So, can you explain to me how this is in compliance to the P.O.C.D., when the P.O.C.D. clearly does state that we should discourage commercial to residential when we can?
Sure. I think for this particular zone, the P.O.C.D. gets specific. So, there's general in the P.O.C.D., and then there's specific in the P.O.C.D., and the rules of statutory construction say, whenever there's a specific standard or regulation, that essentially overrides anything general. So, I would, I would start there by saying that there is a paragraph in the P.O.C.D. that specifically targets the OPD zone and calls for greater density, mixture of uses, taller buildings, all of those things. And the reason for that is because the suburban office park, which was incredibly popular in the nineteen eighties and, and, and did very well, it's, it's not doing well anymore. If you look throughout the state, probably throughout the country, I'd have to imagine, they are, owners of commercial office parks, suburban office parks, are trying to adaptively reuse and reinvent them, and adding mixture of uses. And that's because the general office type of component doesn't work anymore in that suburban atmosphere. I'll tell you one thing that does work, and that we're seeing a lot of, and that's medical office. Medical office is thriving. It's also a huge traffic generator, far greater than any sort of residential could ever imagine. That's the type of office development that works. So, I would, I would say that for starters, that the, the P.O.C.D. specifically calls for mixed-use development in, in that specific paragraph. I'd also note that this site has been, this back portion of the site has been vacant for, you know, since prior to the nineteen eighties. So, in terms of adaptive reuse, while there's not a building there, it is a development site, at least a portion of it is, and so if an office building hasn't been constructed there in, you know, decades, it's time to consider what type of development is appropriate there.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions off of that, too. So, because of maybe economic situations, technology changes, culture changes from the nineteen eighties to nineteen nineties to two thousand and tens and to two thousand twenties, you're making the argument that, that office in suburban may not always be a good fit, or may, may not be a feasible econo- a feasible economic plan or marketing plan for that particular property or for a community or for a neighborhood. But the broader question still remains, how does shifting a commercial property into a residential, high-density residential with mixed use, how is that in the public interest? We have the transit-oriented district zone, which the town's still wrestling to find out how to utilize that to its maximum potential. And it's a similar sort of concept. It is, but it's an area that's already developed, how to use mixed-use residential, commercial, retail to maximize foot traffic density and things of that nature. But the TOD doesn't deal with three hundred housing units. The biggest one we've seen so far is a hundred thirty, and that's causing crying uproar, to say the least. So can you explain to me how this is in a public interest?
Sure. Just to answer that, I think there are a few questions layered in there. But the TOD, if you've seen, you know, a hundred and thirty units, the sites aren't nearly as large. We're talking about a twenty-five acre site here. Seventeen acres are totally vacant, and you've got development, residential development along the eastern side and then along the southern side. The armory is on the western side. And then, as we all know, Holly Lane is littered with a ton of retail development. So this is a very, very developed area, and it's already a mixed-use developed area. Why is this in the best interest of the community? There are many reasons. Right now, you have a site that has been sitting vacant for decades, right? My client's paying about eighty-three thousand dollars a year in property taxes with it vacant. If it's developed with three hundred units, they're going to pay over a million dollars. I actually have, Dave, you have the benefits list? And these are just financial benefits to the community. So there are application fees, permit fees, building permits, sewer connection fees, all of those fees amounting to over two million dollars. Those are flat fees the first time only. But the annual-type fees, the sewer assessment, estimated at about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year, and as I mentioned, over a million dollars anticipated from property taxes. So that's certainly a community benefit in that it raises your tax rolls. The next community benefit is that you have retail, single-family, commercial, all sorts of uses. You are right next to Nichols Avenue, a state highway. You are just a couple blocks from the Merritt Parkway. You are a couple blocks from Route Eight. If this is not an appropriate location for higher-density multifamily, I don't know what is. And while the TOD is an important place for multifamily density as well, you have to give people options. Not everybody wants to live in the middle of downtown. Not everybody wants to live in a transit-oriented development. And that's why your plan of conservation development calls for housing options. People don't have this option over here right now, and I have to, you know, the market drives these types of applications. My clients study the market. They wouldn't be proposing this if they didn't think that there were people that would like to live here. And bringing new people, hundreds of people, to this site so that they can shop in the retail establishments around here and throughout the town, that's a good thing for the community. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I have a follow-up question to that as well. Thank you for that. I had a feeling you'd go to the financial aspect. Every developer does. Everyone talks about how they act to the tax rules. And it is an important component, and this is a significant addition to the grant list. I'm not disputing that. But there's also, it's a give and take. The town would also have to pay something, too. There is twenty percent that could be used for three-bedroom apartments. There's no limitation on two-bedroom apartments. Say if this is developed for maximum build-out with two bedrooms and three-bedroom apartments, what sort of projection or what sort of impact would that have on the school system at a cost of seventeen thousand per pupil without any learning disability?
I can tell you, first off, that when we come in for an actual development plan, all of those things will be studied ad nauseam. But I did do my research on the school system. Included in your packet was an enrollment projection report, which showed that enrollment is steadily declining, just a few key points. So they've been, enrollments have been decreasing since two thousand three, two thousand four. Total K through twelve enrollments are down about eight percent from total enrollments a decade ago. Total enrollments are projected to decline approximately seven percent over an eight-year projection horizon. These are specific numbers. Between December twenty fifteen and December twenty sixteen, enrollment went from seven thousand fifty to seven thousand seventeen. That's a decrease in thirty-three students. And we made some calls to recent developments. While Avalon Bay has thirty-five students, they have a large mixture of one-twos and three-bedrooms. There's also a large affordability component. One-one-one-one Stratford Avenue, which was comprised of studios ones and twos, had six students. So what my client is proposing is luxury, high-end residential units. We don't expect to have a lot of kids. We don't expect to have a lot of three-bedrooms. But I can tell you that when we come in with a specific development plan and a mixture of units, if that remains a concern, I expect that we would hear about it.
But that's precisely what I'm getting at, because we're looking at the legislative side, the text amendment side, as opposed to a specific site plan. If we say you could build up to three bedrooms, twenty percent three bedrooms, no cap on two bedrooms, there's the potential that every unit is two bedrooms with twenty percent three bedrooms. A developer could come in at some point in the future. Because of that legislation that we're changing, that we're, we as a commissioner are allowing a rule change that allows for that sort of density, therefore, you could allow up to the maximum density. Is there any sort of projection based on that, on what a maximum build-out would be, how many students would potentially impact the school system? If it's going down seven percent, well, would that be a two percent increase from this property alone? Is there any sort of research on this specific area?
I can't give you those specific numbers, but what I can tell you is that whatever we propose, this commission would have to approve, and you have discretion. This is not just a simple site plan application where you rubber stamp it. This is a special case approval. So if you think that the municipal resources would be overburdened and stretched or that we haven't proven to you that they wouldn't, then I suspect that you would either tell us we had to build fewer units or deny us. So this is not, you're right, this is a legislative change that allows us to ask. It does not allow us to build anything.
Thank you. And then my final question goes more towards conservation. I understand that there are seventeen designated conservation sites. Can you explain really quick what is defined as a conservation site?
Say the what?
How would you, what is defined as a conservation-protected area? There are seventeen of them on this property.
Seventeen acres?
Yeah. So I mean, what would, how would you define that? How is that establish a conservation?
It's easement. So it's a, there's a legal document on the land records that if a potential, whenever a potential purchaser buys a piece of property, they do a title search. It comes up in the title search and says, you may not build, you may not put any structures within this area. And it clearly lays out what can happen there. In order to do essentially anything within a conservation area, you have to get approval from the inland wetlands conservation commission. So it essentially keeps it in its natural state.
I'm also, I'm thinking twenty, thirty, fifty years down the road, a future owner of the property well beyond our times involved in town government. What if they say seventeen acres is a bit excessive, maybe twelve acres is more appropriate? And then that conservation zone gets chipped away and eroded away? I imagine they'd have to go through a whole easement process to that. Well, what's there to prevent them from going through that process? And what roadblocks would be put in a place where safeguards more appropriately to protect these seventeen acres?
Well, as you mentioned, it's a legal document, so it would have to be amended by the parties that signed the agreement. And one of those parties is the town of Stratford and the conservation commission. So in order to amend it at all, we'd have to get approval from commissions and the town. So it's not something that the developer could just say, oh, I don't like this anymore. I'd like to, you know, reduce it. They could try, they could ask, and they could be told now.
And what other reviews have there been on this particular text amendment to Conservation Commission, Town Council, Wetlands Commission, any other sort of appropriate sort of board historic, well, Historic District Commission won't have jurisdiction up here. But any other sort of, other in the planning commission, has there been any other sort of state or local agency that reviewed this process?
None of the other local commissions or agencies have jurisdiction at this point. But I know as a matter of course, the zoning office sends referrals to basically everyone and asks for comments. And maybe Mr. Hibansky can read off that list, but it includes both people within the municipal government as well as the adjacent towns. Mr. Hibansky, do you have that list by any chance?
Do you want to go through it? At this point, let us finish this question, because I think there's some other questions. And then Mr. Hibansky can read through it at the end, if we could. I do want to get to...
And that was my last question for now, actually.
Okay. I'm going to jump in here. I don't usually until the end, but I want to hit a couple of really big issues that have come forward and just get them out of the, you know, get them up front. Out of all the letters, response from the public, all right, that I've received, things that have come forward, emails and otherwise, one of the, there's a couple of driving comments that have come forward that I just want you to address, and by no means, don't read into it as one way or the other. There's a concern that if we as a body allow residential units to be included in this text amendment, it opens the opportunity that even with the best of intentions for luxury apartments that you may build, as nice as they may be intentional, that if they don't succeed or something changes, that the town would be susceptible to recognizing those units to a different application, an eight-thirty G, which is an affordable application. And because we do not have the, we do not meet the threshold for affordable housing, and we do not have any more available units under the five-point-three, we would be put in an untenable position, and we've been there before. So my question is, if we did allow mixed use with residential component of any amount, I know we have the options of putting in, you know, thresholds on that, would that make us susceptible or potentially open ourselves up to an eight-thirty-three application down the road?
Would it make you any more susceptible than you are today? Because with an eight-thirty G application, which I believe all of you are very familiar with at this point, you can propose the development anywhere. It could go in a single-family zone, it could go in a commercial zone, it could go anywhere where you can demonstrate that it works and that the need for affordable housing outweighs any sort of, you know, drain on municipal resources. So if I can build a large commercial office building on this site, I could theoretically also build affordable housing. However, we have not proposed an eight-thirty G application, and you would know if we did because we would have to submit very specific elements of the application in connection with the site plan approval. So you would know going in what we were proposing, and that is not what we are proposing. My clients, they want to build luxury housing, and they couldn't just in the dead of night convert it into something else. If you approve a specific type of housing with specific finishes and facade treatments, we have to build that. We can't build something else.
Okay. I'm going to take your answer, just because this is going to be beaten to death, I know, so bear with me. Mr. Florrick, or Mr. Hibansky, whichever you feel, could you comment on that a little bit further from the town's side of it? What the responsibilities or the potential is with it, with an eight-thirty G or any kind of affordable housing or any other kind of housing that might come about?
Well, as far as an eight-thirty G, I think the attorney is right in that that type of an application can be made at any point, in any area, at any time. They can't unilaterally change it from something that was approved by this commission to an eight-thirty G. You know, it's got to come before this commission as an affordable housing application. I'm not sure theoretically how it would happen, but let's assume that a luxury apartment development were to be approved for that site. And at some point in time, wanted to be somehow converted to an eight-thirty G with more units or something like that. The only, as you know, the, under the current legislative scheme, the burden is on the municipality to demonstrate what interests are injured by the eight-thirty G rather than on the applicant to show, to have the burden of proof to show that those interests aren't being injured. So the one thing that you would have in the record already, if that were to happen, is an existing apartment structure. And you'd, so you would have a track record. So rather than having a lot of traffic experts or experts of other kinds coming in and saying, well, theoretically, this is going to happen or that's going to happen, you'd already have a track record that you could base it upon. I don't necessarily see the approval of a luxury apartment, luxury apartments under a special case application being detrimental to the town's position if it were to somehow turn into an affordable housing project. So just off the top of my head here, I don't see that being a detriment, a real concern.
Okay. Take it one step further, another scenario that was presented to me. If the market doesn't continue as strong as it is right now for the apartment millennials and so forth, and you find yourself with vacancies, severe vacancies, what do you do? Does that mean that housing can, the rentals will become lower rentals? And does it turn into the type of housing that may not be as beneficial to the town? What are the downsides to it?
Well, once the, once the structure is up and it's been built in accordance with a luxury type of development, it's there, right? So the size of the units are there, the finishes are there, all of those things are there. So in terms of building a track, what we would think would be a very attractive development, the town has that. Is it possible that rents would go down because they couldn't rent? Sure, that's always, always possible. I mean, that's how the market works, right? It's driven by demand. So if they can't rent units and the reason is because the price is too high, then rents could be reduced, but you would still have that same building, that same, you know, asset for the community. Does that answer your question, Madam Chair?
Yeah, I think it does. And probably in the same way, could those units be converted back to office space or some other use?
We, not without getting your approval, they couldn't. They couldn't just unilaterally be converted. We can't do anything, essentially. If you approve something, we have to build that. And if we want to build something else, you have to approve that.
Okay. I think that's, for the moment, that was my first question. I think I'm going to turn it back over and allow the other commissioners. I know we're going to hit that topic again. Mr. Giuliano.
Good evening. How are you?
I'm doing well. Yourself?
Good. I'm trying to process all of this. Commissioner Fuller really pulls it forward on the POCD and everything. What I'm seeing here is you're rewriting a whole regulation here for us, and we were looking for a planner. I think we found her. Makes sense? I just have a hard time with that because, you know what? You want to change it over, but you don't want to give us any specifics on what you want to put there. I mean, six-story, eight-story, what's the height, where's the elevation? Plain tree road, that's the whole rock side on that side there. What's the plan there? Are you going to leave that as a buffer? Are you blasting that out? I mean, you're moving that hotel over, I mean, over from this print here that I had that you were... that you took down, okay? So what I'm trying to get at is, you want a text amendment change, but you don't want us to know basically all these other things that are going to happen for approval, and then you can come back, and then we got to reapprove something, which is like the cart in front of the horse again. I think I've been here. So I just want, some of those questions there, what are you going to do on the eastern side along Plain Tree? Because there's a huge rock mountain there. Is that going to be a buffer? You taking that out? And then on the other side, right across, there's another one, and in relationships to Big Y, are you going to be above Big Y, below Big Y? Are you going to be at the level of that parking lot that comes in? I mean, there's...
Sure.
Tons of issues here. I mean, the other one, other thing would be, too, if this was so great, how come we didn't go first with the commercial part and put up a hotel? Stratford needs another hotel. We really don't have one. We have tournaments and everything. They have to go to, they either have to go north, or they have to go south or something to our adjoining towns to get somewhere, and we really lost most of ours.
Well, I can start with the last question first. The Marriott, the Trumbull Marriott is basically directly across the street, so that could be a reason why the hotel didn't, didn't happen. But we aren't, we aren't rewriting the OPD. We are adding a section to give folks the opportunity to do, more flexibility to do something on this site. And the reason that we are proposing the text amendment first before the development plan is so that we don't propose something that you all absolutely hate and that the neighbors absolutely hate. We wanted to get feedback. Can you imagine if we came in with this text amendment and the proposal as we originally drafted it and did architectural drawings, civil drawings, every study imaginable, went to inland wetlands, all of those things, just to find out that, no, we don't like that number of units? That's way too many units. We don't like that height. It's too tall. It's a lot easier to design a building after having these types of conversations. And we thought that that was in the best interest of the community as well as the applicant. But we have studied the topography, and we have studied the possible massing on the site to give you all an idea of what theoretically it would look like. I'm going to ask Mr. Rains to come up here and kind of, because he created these drawings, but what you're looking, I think they have some handouts, too, because this is far away and it's...
Eric Rains, landscape architect, for the record. You mentioned the east edge of the, of the site, and on the drawings that are being circulated now, if you'll find SPL 2.0, as Lisa had mentioned, we're using a massing study of the building in order to evaluate how it would fit on the site, where it could fit within the available area for development. And so that's what you see represented in all of the images that represent the building. It's more about the mass of the building than it is what it looks like insofar as finishes or exact detail. So in SPL 2.0, in the upper left there is a section that goes through, just for reference, it's probably better to look at 1.0 and find section line A-A. And section line A-A begins at the, one of the proposed building masses that we're talking about and extends east over toward Plain Tree Road. So then on 2.0, in the upper left, is that section. So the larger, the block on the left there, the larger block, is a representation of what a building of the massing that we're talking about would, would look like. And then the terrain that exists on the site as you move east is represented there as well. And the line happens to be drawn through a section of property toward Plain Tree Road, where it basically crosses through two of the homes, and those are represented there as well with the relative elevations that exist around those properties. In the middle there, you'll see where the property line is. So anything east of that property line is off our site. So whatever exists there is what would, what would remain. And then anything west of that line is on our site, and it would be, you know, part of, part of what we would be developing here. There, we, because it's a massing study, we, there's, there's, there's no indication that we would need to go beyond the area that's shown here. Certainly preserving that vegetation would be an advantage to not only this property but also to the adjacent properties. In the upper right of that same sheet is a, is a sketch of what, what it would, what it could look like potentially as you look through the existing vegetation toward the proposed building. So you'll see in that, in that sketch, which is represented here, you know, a representation of what that would be. On the bottom of that same sheet is, is moving over toward, over onto Peacock Drive, and it's more of an elevated view, so it captures the context of the areas that are to the farther west of the site. The existing office building is there in those white blocks, and then, and then our buildings that are represented in the massing are there in the center. You had another question about, about whether you would see Big Y. And so if you look on page 2.1, there's a section there going in a perpendicular direction So for reference, if you look at 1.0, you'll find, if you'll find section line B-B, it's a perpendicular line to the first one we were discussing. And then on sheet, on page 2.1 in your set, the same sort of setup, the image across the top represents the massing that we're talking about here tonight, and the image across the, the image to the right represents the home, a home on, on, on Peacock. Actually, it represents number 60 Peacock. And then in between those two is the distance that, that is the conservation area. And, and that conservation area is represented by a dimension of 875 feet. So, so the home on Peacock would be 875 feet to the, to the southern property line, plus another 20, 30 feet to the house. And then on the, on the north end of that line, it would be another 20 feet to the building. So that's about 1,100 square, 1,100 linear feet from the, from the proposed building mass that we're talking about to, to, to Peacock. And then below that is, again, another sketch, taking it, trying to take into account the existing vegetation that would remain within the conservation area. There's a series of spot elevations across the section line at the top that give you an indication of what the terrain is doing with, within the conservation area. And you'll see that at Peacock, we're about elevation 142 at the low point of the, of the conservation and wetland area. It drops down to 132 and then back up again.
I have a quick question. As you were talking about that drawing, the top corner there says 78 feet from the bottom of the building to the top of the building, and your drawing represents six stories. I don't know if that's the scale or not. Is that, we've updated, or your proposed update is to 70 feet, and I'm not sure if it's consistent.
It's not. This was done for the Planning Commission meeting, so it predates the change. So this is a little bit taller than what we ultimately are proposing at this point with the 70 feet. But it just, we didn't have a chance to update these drawings for...
That's fine. I just wanted to make sure that I...
You're correct. It is a little bit taller.
Okay. Thank you.
And then just the last point. In that same sketch, the Big Y is to the, to the far left on the, on the sheet.
Just, maybe you might be answered. If construction went through, where would you be coming in and out of? Do you know?
Well, I, you know, I think that we could, we could...
Somebody else would know that?
We could take a stab at that with the, with just a site plan, but there, you know, access is generally on the west, I would say, but, but...
Off of Armory or something? You would come through there? Or you wouldn't go through Merritt 8?
Yeah.
Right?
Again, that hasn't, that hasn't been...
Hasn't been...
Hasn't been determined. I can tell you that one of the key issues that came out of, we had a, we had a neighbor meeting, I should have said...